7:00 PM, we'll call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our clerk has notified the board, she'll be likely a few minutes late, so in her temporary absence.
Nominate trustee Thering for temporary clerk.
Support.
You willing to serve?
Yes.
We have a motion by Smith, support by Brown, I'm assuming there's no other nominations. All in favor of trustee Thering acting as temporary clerk until the clerk arrives, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, thank you trustee Thering.
You're welcome.
Looks good on you.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, would you be willing to do a roll call of the board, please?
Yeah. Uh, roll call. Trustee Thering is here, supervisor Milky.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Treasurer Rice is excused. Trustee Bills is excused and the clerk will be here shortly.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have an agenda in front of us. Just note, for those that might be looking at the agenda that are not familiar with it, we have a presentation as item five, we're anticipating that won't begin until about eight o'clock because the person doing the presentation won't be here till then, so we may go slightly out of order. But with that, I'm happy to entertain any motions to approve the agenda.
Can I make a addition right now?
Sure.
Okay, under 11C, I'd like to add 2% discussion.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Support, oh, did you support it already here?
Nope, uh, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of item 11C, a 2% discussion.
Yes.
Any other discussion on this issue? All in favor of approving the agenda with the one addition, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Agenda passes with one addition unanimously. So that brings us to presentations, which I mentioned earlier, we'll wait till later. We have no public hearings, so we'll open up public comment at 7:03 PM. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And we'll open at 7:03 PM. Do we have anybody?
Um, we have Rodney on there, but I believe he is there for, um, I, uh, new business.
For the private road ordinance introduction first reading.
So seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment at 7:04 PM and let the record show, no one approached online either. And I hope I'm gonna be forgiven for this, but I realized, uh, we have Commissioner Angler here this evening. Is there any objections to me going back to presentations and allowing Commissioner Angler to speak?
No, not at all.
My apologies.
You're not missing much, so anyways. So I know trustee Smith covers our meetings and I saw that people might have more, a lot more questions, so I'm here more to answer your questions and find out what's going on with the, the board. So I know there's a lot going on with the county go up right now, so I will take any questions pertaining to anything going on.
I guess I'd just like to confirm my thoughts. Your budget has to be approved by, is it October 31st?
Yeah, then, you know, I guess I will make a comment, even though I said I wasn't going to. You know, I had to look back and it's been about five months or so when we discovered the asbestos in the building. And people kinda said, well, you rushed things through and everything, that kinda put a, a change on everything, especially with our budgeting, cause we're always, but basically almost budgeted all year round, so, um, some of the misconceptions out there is that, you know, this was, you know, we just went right to the voters on there, but actually I think the millage was about a Plan C once we started about a week and a half after we got the asbestos in there, we started getting quotes and some information on what we had to do, and then we started the budget process then, so. During that time, we had two separate different plans, started looking at the cuts we'd have to make. And we really didn't wanna go to the, the voters at that time, but after we got more into it, we decided that if it was gonna be that much of a drastic cut, that maybe we better take it to the voters, but, uh, you know, we always kinda knew it was gonna be a very tough sale at that time, and it turned out to be, so, um, so we will get a balanced budget. Like I said, we're working on that right now, and, uh, we've been in negotiations for, you know, probably all during, ever since, actually ever since we found out about the asbestos, we've been working on budgets and trying to figure out how to get through this, but as soon as something new comes up now, we'll inform you guys, so, uh, we will get through this, and I know it'll be, it'll be an interesting time, but, uh, we have a lot of good employees and, uh, hopefully, uh, like I said, I think we'll get through it all right, but I'll take any questions, if not, um...
I'll just say publicly what I told you earlier, I appreciate that you're there and glad you're on our county commission.
Well, I, I was kinda joking, but I did fill out my paperwork the other day and, um, so we figured that we need to, uh, see this through regardless, so, I know we had a little bit of a, cause our next terms are four years and I didn't really...
Oh, that's right.
I know, I was gonna do two more years and then four more years, but it involved a couple of the projects that I'll have to stick around, so, uh, we're, we're gonna try to see this through and try to get this through, so, yes, sir.
And then your, uh, and your operating millage is actually up for renewal this fall, correct?
It's always up, yes, it'll be in August, so, um, that's, like I said, that's kinda scary, cause if that doesn't go through, I guess, you know, we will probably, you know, people always say when I say stuff or something that we're threatening people, we're not, but if that, there's no money to run anything, and then basically you'd almost have to do like California did a few years ago and declare bankruptcy and the state would come in with, or like flip, come in with the, uh, some sort of a takeover or stuff, because we would have no money to operate. And it hasn't been really raised, you know, since '72. You know, we've had a couple of comments we've had, and then again, I'm going on where I said I wasn't going to, but I know you got to eight o'clock, so you wait. You know, about the millage, and the county has had a lot of millage increases, um, but you look and I'll say I didn't vote for all of them, but I know, like out in my district, Mill City built a new football field and, uh, athletic complex, Mount Pleasant did an improvement. Shepherd, I think, did one too, so those are beyond the operating millage. We have the, the I Ride millage, we have the commission on aging, um, the parks, the library, and these were all initiated by the voters, and to tell you the truth, it, it has actually improved the county greatly, I don't think we would've had a commission on aging building here in all the programs if it was just up to the county board because of the budget. You know, our parks have done, you know, quite a bit improvements over the years, a lot of them would go, and both the commission on aging and the parks also go after a lot of grants, so they do a great job, but these are things that the voters wanted, and they voted on it as a, usually as initiative, so, uh, we can put millage forward, but we can't support them as a board, so, uh, that's kinda how that works, so.
One more thing I'd like to add, though, and sitting and watching your meetings, I must commend you and the other commissioners for biting your tongues when you have public comment. It's been a little more nasty, if I wanna say it that way, um, and I commend you for taking it in grace and everything else, people are angry and they're venting, but I commend you and the rest of the board for taking it with grace.
Comes with the territory, I think, but...
Yeah.
I guess, you know, the only thing that, that ever bothers me is, is, you know, what I make up in, in town, I'll do for extra work, so when you, you gotta talk, do your homework, I said there's a lot of information out there and, you know, we get yelled at for not doing the roads and the Mill City thing and things that we have no control over, and that's okay, people are mad, they, it's a good place to, to talk about it, but, uh, yeah, it's, we're just there to, uh, to try to do the best of the county, and I think the entire board works that way, we're fairly united on it, we disagree on a few things, but I think on this, we're all pretty, pretty united, um, you know, both sides of the aisle, so we don't seem to have too much disagreement on getting the things done, it's just how we do it once in a while, so. And I will try to keep you guys updated, as I said, right now, we're doing a lot of negotiations and stuff that we can't really get into, but, uh, try to keep updated, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that brings us to item nine on the agenda. We had a brief discussion, one trustees and I, we, we have one applicant for the planning commission, I haven't had a chance to talk to that person yet, so I plan on doing that very soon, my apologies. Board member reports, trustee Thering?
I'm, I'm clear.
Clerk Cody? Trustee Brown?
Yeah, I went to the regular Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting Monday, March 11th, this past Monday, short meeting, about twenty, twenty-five minutes. The only thing they really had, well, they had one big new business, and it was, uh, three different motions they had to do with considering the Mount Pleasant Airport and redoing taxway, uh, taxiway A rehabilitation. All three motions passed, um, with Crawford Contracting doing the real, the re, rehabilitation of the taxiway A, um, and that was most of what the, what the meeting was about. But Bill Brechner gave a really cool kinda presentation about Mount Pleasant Airport. And there were some neat things, if you guys go back there and see it, but, uh, one thing that I didn't realize, that I just wanted to bring up, um, I didn't realize that Mount Pleasant Airport brings in seven million dollars annually, um, you know, and I, I thought that was a pretty good chunk of money, I just never, I've always thought Mount Pleasant Airport being small, growing up here, you know, didn't realize, you know, but, uh, they did a really good job, you did a really good presentation.
Thank you. Trustee Smith?
I attended the county work session on March 5th, and as Commissioner Angler had talked about, there's numerous things that they discussed, they had a presentation from the MSU Extension, District Six, Karbowski, and a registered dietitian, Carol Lynch, talked about the different things that they do with youth support, um, three thousand plus for the kids, food safety, education, uh, so they went into a nice discussion on that, so it's not just for age, it's not just farmers, but they're also doing a bunch of other things for the community. Uh, their committee reports were mostly, seemed like a lot of routine stuff, that was more financial institution, grants, things like that. They are progressing on the Motorola Milestone Three Radio Tower project, so that's really a good thing, I think I talked about it before, about how this is gonna give radio operability within the big box stores all across the county and the casino and everything else, so that's could be a really positive thing, and it's, again, I don't think I should say this every time, it is grant funded. Just wanna make sure, this is grant funded, so, it was a four million something grant, I believe, for it, so it is grant funded, and, um, then they just had some discussion on external hiring fees for general fund, and I think that's what we're gonna be hearing a lot more of as we move forward.
Thank you. Let's see, EDA meets Tuesday, uh, but the board review did meet last week for the organizational meeting, that was about a little over an hour, um, and then we had our two days of public hearings, Monday from three to nine and Tuesday from nine to three. If you remember, we had the training that was put on, uh, the township did. I think that helped minimize some of the people that come there and not understand, because they don't understand the process, um, they come there frustrated, end up getting nothing done because they don't really have anything, they just wanna learn and express frustration, um, cause you know, as everybody knows, property taxes went up five percent for everybody, at least five percent. So, um, as a result of that training, though, I think we had less numbers of appeals before the board. We also don't do the veterans exemptions anymore, that's done by the assessing office itself instead of the board review, so that really streamline things. As secretary, uh, I'd always get behind when we did the poverty or the vet exemptions, but I was able to keep up this time, cause I think we only had about twelve appeals, maybe, maybe thirteen.
Did you have a nice turnout for the training?
Twenty-six people, I think it was.
Oh, that's good.
And, uh, in fact, Jill Peters, our assessor, got a standing ovation at the end of the meeting, it was highly, well-received.
Good.
Yeah, so, uh, i- if I had a critique of the event, um, and I, and this was expressed at the board review, is the notification of that training went out with, um, the assessment notice, and for many people, that was too tight of a timeframe, in fact, some people didn't know about the training that had, were challenging their assessments, because the mail was slow for them, and so they missed the training. So I, I think it might be helpful if we, if we can include or plan enough ahead, um, to maybe include that in the winter tax bills, and then repeat it again when we send out the assessment, that way people can put it in their calendar, they know it's an option, but I, I can't express enough how well it was received, it was, uh, definitely worth the time.
Good.
And I think it took almost two hours, I think it could probably be shortened down to about an hour and a half, so, that was Jill Peters' assessment as well, I mean, she, she's the one that brought up that idea, and I thought, yeah, we could probably shorten it up a little bit, and...
That's fantastic.
Yeah, it really was good.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and I really think people learned and understood what the township has control over, what they don't have control over, because to be honest, township has very little control over most of that.
Having the paperwork filled, you know, if you wanna appeal, having your paperwork filled out prior to is really, that's required.
Right, yeah.
And for us to answer que, uh, there was a time where I was on the board where, you know, if you happen to have a little extra time, which didn't always work out, you know, you'd give them an opportunity to, to fill it out.
And, and I think that might be a byproduct, a positive byproduct to this as well, because we weren't slammed, um, we took the time and helped applicants fill out their paperwork right then, cause you can't really take their case until they fill out that petition.
Right, sometimes just filling out the paperwork answers their own question.
So very often, the chair would get up, uh, Brian Nyer, he would get up and walk and, and help the person fill out their paperwork, and then come sit down, and then we'd listen to him, so, yeah.
Nice.
It was pretty, pretty fabulous. Okay, so moving on, consent agenda, uh, happy to entertain any motions, and as a note, trustee Brown had warrants this week. Motion to approve?
Support. Warrants are all set.
A motion to approve by Smith, support by Thering, um, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to our new business, uh, introduction and first reading for the proposed new private road ordinance updates. Mr. Stuhl dryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. There is a administration's report on this item that begins on page twenty-one of your agenda packet, as was indicated, this is before you tonight as an introduction and a first reading. The township's current private road ordinance was adopted by the board back in December of two thousand. Just so everybody's clear, a private road is any road or street that is privately maintained and that has not been accepted for maintenance by a, uh, by the county or state road authority or somebody that has, uh, juristic, legal jurisdiction. The current road ordinance, we feel, has some, uh, rather significant limitations, for instance, it does not include any provisions for altering or the maintenance of existing, uh, private roads or connectivity to other, uh, parcels that may be coming, uh, that might be in, in that area. It does not have a, what we feel is a clear, uh, application and approval process for new or altered, uh, private roads. It does not identify the administrative official or body, uh, that would be responsible for enforcement of the ordinance, and it does not address anything in the way of naming of private roads. This proposed ordinance that's in front of you, it establishes a private road permit approval process for new roads, um, or alterations to existing roads, and you might think of that as similar to the review process and the zoning ordinance for various activities that are, that are land use related. It, it includes updated standards for smaller, uh, private roads that serve up to eight lots as defined in, in the proposal in front of you, and it requires larger private roads to conform to the, uh, standards of the road commission, um, in terms of how they're built and, and whatnot. It defines, the new ordinance defines shared driveways as private roads. The existing ordinance intentionally exempted shared driveways from the private roads, uh, we feel that's in conflict a bit with the, um, zoning codes, um, and, cause that prohibits the development or use of shared driveways for vehicle access to, to, uh, single-family dwellings. Includes some basic provisions for maintenance of the private roads and the shared driveways, intended to ensure that emergency access, emergency vehicles can access those private roads, and it also includes administrative provision, enforcement provision, so that we can, um, so there's clarity on enforcement if, uh, there, there are violations. This draft was reviewed by the township attorney's office, those comments are incorporated therein, and we feel it's, uh, the adoption of this, uh, updated ordinance would resolve the limitations that affect administration of the existing ordinance, the enforcement of same, and to establish maintenance, primarily maintenance requirements for existing private roads. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if the, uh, we do have Mr. Nanny, I believe, here via Zoom, if, if you have questions, um, and then if, if this does pass introduction and first reading, it would be brought back at a subsequent board meeting for a second reading, final approval, and then eventual adoption following the proper notices that are required.
Go ahead.
I do have some questions, um, and it may just be the way I interpreted some of the language, um, I'm referencing page twenty-six. And it may just be the way I interpreted some of the language. I'm referencing page twenty-six. Under maintenance agreement, number three. And it says, owners of land abutting to a new private road or an extension of portion of an existing road shall agree to indemnify and hold harmless to township and its representatives for any and all claims for personal injury and property damage arising out of the use of the private road. And I was reading that along with, on page thirty-two. Believe it's oops. Inspections, that kind of paragraph. And my interpretation is, is if the township is going to be the enforcer of the ordinance, which somebody has to be, the applicant has to abide by all the rules, which some of the rules are to have this put together by an engineer and approved by, it looks like, their engineer and the township's engineer. Me being somebody who doesn't know how to build a road, if these are being required and everything signed off, but then there's some, I don't know what the personal injury would be. But let's say it was found to be on some engineering malfunction.
Where are you at now on page thirty-two?
Oh, the very bottom inspections, where it talks about, you know, during the various stages, the township engineer working in, working with the applicant's engineer, which is required in, if you're going to, you know. I'm looking at it as a, somebody built a private road and there's homes or something on each side. And they built it, which the applicant, all's the applicant is, more or less, is filling out the paperwork and making sure it's paid for. Administratively and through engineering through the township, because they are part of the enforcer, or they are the enforcer of the ordinance. If something was done incorrectly, shouldn't, and the engineers are the ones who are saying, hey, we're good to go, shouldn't they be held, I'm not going to say liable, but shouldn't they be held somewhat responsible for that? Because on page twenty-six, you know, part of the ordinance is asking to hold them harmless, which I don't know what could go wrong, you know. I'm just kind of thinking, maybe I'm thinking totally way to the one side and I shouldn't be. I didn't know if there was, you had different thoughts on that?
Well, I think part of the reason for trying to limit the township's liability is because we don't know what can go wrong. And if something goes wrong, often folks want to go after what they consider to be the deep pockets. So we can get dragged into any number of things just because we, you know, somebody can get hit in a park and they'll sue the governing body. Some people do. And then the other thing is, this being a private road, the maintenance is the responsibility of the owners of the property along the private road. And, you know, if they're responsible for the maintenance and something goes wrong, and again, it's just trying to shield some township liability exposure. And is Rodney unmuted? Rodney, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
I think that I would simply add that the the purpose here really is to provide the opportunity for private road development. If a developer or property owners have wanted a road, they want to limit their liability and limit their costs, they can certainly pursue establishment of a public road. And then obviously, that liability in the end would be in the hands of the Road Commission primarily when they take ownership of that road for maintenance purposes. The key to this ordinance is, the township does review the plans and such for compliance. And we do inspect the site to make sure that what was built matches the plans. But the actual liability, responsibility always remains with the owners of the land along the road.
There's, because there is a maintenance agreement that I think is presented or a maintenance schedule or agreement or something to the landowners, is that correct? That tells them what they have to do, when they have to do it? Or is that something that the township will, once a year, inspect the road to say, no, they're in compliance? Or if they're not in compliance, get with the owners of the private road to let them know?
So as I said, the responsibility for these things is maintained with the owners of the land that use the road. There's an inspection process for roads that are being constructed, just similar to when buildings are constructed. And our building official inspects them as they're being constructed, make sure they match the state construction code. The challenge here with the maintenance agreement, this is, we require that it exists, but it is, again, a private agreement between the owners of the land. They are responsible for executing that agreement. They're responsible for doing the maintenance work. The township's role is, if the road isn't properly maintained, especially if it's poorly maintained to the point where emergency equipment can get down there. That's where our provisions relate to existing roads and that minimum maintenance level come into play. But that's essentially an enforcement tool to deal with circumstances where the owners are failing to follow the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Thering, can I expand on briefly what you brought up? So if I were to paraphrase, was your concern that because township engineers are involved in the process and have to sign off on it, if there was negligence at that stage, in other words, it was poorly engineered and that caused problems, is that kind of what you were getting at with the indemnity?
Yeah, I wish I would have just explained it to you and you could have just but yeah, I mean, something along those lines is, that's what I'm, there has to be an enforcer, there has to be rules. I understand that. It just, to me, it sounded like there was, shouldn't the township and/or the engineers, how about if I say the engineers, that oversee and say, yep, it was done properly? That, I mean, I believe my question's been answered.
Well, I think clearly if there's negligence legally defined and proven, that there's going to be some liability on behalf of the parties that were negligent.
Okay, so the ordinance wouldn't supersede that and say, well, we shouldn't be able to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, as I understood it from the conversation, the indemnity here is after the fact. Once the road's up and working, that it's properly maintained, that it's not on the township. If the neighbors do something screwy and, I don't know, slip on their road.
Right, right.
Right?
Yeah, and I'm not talking something like, like I said, I couldn't even think of an example. I just thought maybe I'm thinking, my thinking's way off, maybe.
It's kind of like the County Road Commission. If they know a pothole exists and they don't do anything within thirty days, somebody could legally go after them for that if they don't do something within thirty days. I think that what they're trying to do is saying, this just removes the township away from the post-production development of the road. It's like the ice. Nobody salted it. Township's not liable. So I don't think any ordinance is ever going to overrule gross negligence.
And so if the township would ever find that the road has not been properly maintained, then the township would then do its due diligence and enforce to make sure it was taken care of?
Yes, with public safety as the, kind of the foundational requirement.
Okay.
If a fire truck can't get down a private road, we need to do so.
Right.
Just let him complete whatever questions he has.
Yeah, I have, I believe I have one more.
I could wait.
I could too.
I believe I have one more. I got a lot of notes here, but a lot of questions were answered. So could a private road ever be forced to put in a sidewalk?
I don't believe so.
I didn't really see any wording on there, but I, I don't know. I'm just asking.
That may fall more into the sidewalk ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
I mean, I don't believe we could because it's not in the private road ordinance.
I didn't see anything, but I just wanted to ask.
And that's not our, I mean, our intent would not be to try to put we're not overtly encouraging a lot of private road development, if any. But we know it exists, and we know it can exist, and in some cases, it should exist. But where it does, we don't feel our current ordinance gives us the tools that we need for the good of the township. It's kind of where we're coming from.
I think I'm, I think I'm good for now.
Trustee Smith?
I just had a couple of quick questions. Section four requirements, page twenty-four, just bottom. The recorded maintenance agreement, is that, where is that recorded? Is that recorded with the title of the properties or is that recorded at the township? When it says existing shared driveways and existing private roads without a recorded maintenance agreement, where would something like that be recorded at, like a new private road?
Rodney, isn't there language in here that requires recording these documents with the registered deeds on the various parcels?
That is correct. For new private roads, the recording takes place on the property through the County Registered Deeds Office. The reason this language doesn't say that specifically is because frankly, with older roads, there could be a variety of ways that agreement might have been recorded or memorialized. And so we don't want to limit to simply only registered deeds. But anything new, we'll use that in the registered deeds process.
Okay, thank you. And then this also, going to the next sections on twenty-five, one, two, and three. Any existing private roads would be subject to this ordinance if they don't meet these three, like, safety protocols, if you want to call it, for fire and vertical zone over the roadway and gravel roadway service. That would apply to existing private roads as well. So if somebody had a fifteen-foot gravel, existing private, this ordinance would allow the township to come in and force them to do, put in an extra five feet of gravel? Am I correct on that?
This does establish a minimum standard, yes.
Okay.
So if I can follow up on that? So essentially, portions or all of this is police powers?
Yes, this is a police power or general ordinance.
This is a general ordinance, not part of the zoning code.
Yeah. And as a result of that, then the grandfather issue, I think, that you're kind of bringing up is moot, right?
Okay.
So that
It is grand, they would be grandfathered?
I'm sorry?
They would be grandfathered?
No, would not. It's full police powers, so this ordinance is in full effect on existing roads that are not, potentially non-conforming.
Then what if there's not enough space?
Well, there's certain realities such as that that I think would have to be accommodated. But you have property owners along a private road and, and let's say there's no maintenance agreement. And we've kind of run into this with the shared driveway area. The two houses on the parcel begin to fight over the shared driveway. And we get dragged into the middle of it. And this would help us deal with that. And if an existing private road doesn't do any snow plowing that they refuse to put in a maintenance agreement, create a maintenance agreement amongst property owners, some minimum level, then that's where we can step in and try to enforce the ordinance. What are our options there? Moral suasion is the term I like to use. This is a general ordinance, so we could go to the courts and have them try to enforce it. But if somebody just flat out refuses, then you're, you know, what are you going to do? I don't think we're going to do any taking of property. That's not contemplated in here. I just have one final question. Rodney, can you expand on that a little bit? I mean, if somebody just refuses, four property owners refuse to get together and do a maintenance agreement, I mean, as a practical matter, what are we going to do?
Well, if it's a new situation, whoever is developing the road is going to develop a maintenance agreement and basically, all the lots will be subject to it. You're absolutely correct. Existing circumstances, some have maintenance agreements, some do not. Some are formal, some are very informal. In any existing case where ordinance enforcement is both involved, we simply go aggressive, work with the owners to bring the property back into compliance. And as was mentioned, with existing roads, the goal really is to ensure public safety, to ensure that emergency equipment can get down that road and back. So once we're to a point where that is correct, that's true, then our enforcement activities are done.
Has the planning commission weighed in on this yet?
It's on our agenda for next week.
Oh, okay.
Did you hear that question, Rodney?
I did. Actually, I paused to give it the chance for someone else to answer it.
Yeah, it's next week.
So then the public will have another opportunity to raise questions or concerns of the public and stuff.
And that would be informational only for the planning commission, would it not?
Yes, the planning commission is a recommending body. They will look at it and they'll make their comments back to the board, recommendations. And also, before a second reading of this ordinance, there will be a notice published in the newspaper notifying people of the upcoming second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Brown?
I'm all set.
I think mine are simple questions. See if I can articulate them. I didn't take notes quite as well as you did, Trustee Thering. In section eleven, which would be page twenty-nine, this is expiration and extension. Am I correct that typically when a site plan comes before the planning commission, the applicant has one year to begin the project without an extension?
That used to be the case. Actually, the five hundred and forty-five days matches
It does. Well, you answered my question then, which is really where do these come from? Because I was thinking that our site plan process was twelve months, but that's changed in the last ordinance, huh? Okay, so that mirrors that. That makes perfect sense then. Bear with me. I think it's in the same section. I had a question. Maybe it's a different section. Escrow, I think I questioned the escrow section. See, I didn't take notes of what section that was. Bear with me, I'm sorry.
Fees and escrow deposits?
Yes.
Section seventeen, page thirty, thirty-three, page thirty-three.
So I'm just going to ask a question, even though it's not fully, I'm not fully ready to articulate it. But when I read through this section of fees and escrow deposits and performance guarantees, the next section, I got the impression that if, if there was an entity that decided to put in a private road, went through the engineering process, took all those initial steps, but never actually did the construction, but they had put up an escrow, that it sounded as though the township could make it still happen if they, in other words, maybe they backed out. But the way I interpreted the language was that the township would essentially finish the job. And typically, when I think of escrow, I think of if they only did half the job and they left a mess. If you escrow a large construction project, right, it's so that you can either tear it down or finish the building. It's so that you can either tear it down or finish the building. Uh, it's, it's insurance against the developing party from backing out. And is that, that's the intent of this section, I'm assuming? That's my question, I guess.
That, that is correct. That is the intent of this section. There's no case where the township is going to, uh, do the, the, the whole private road construction project. There's no reason to. If they, if they didn't start it, then, uh, decide, decide to, uh, not pursue it, uh, we would simply ask for a, uh, letter, tell, uh, give us that information, and then we would return the escrow deposit. That's, that's our practice with site plans and other things that, that use that same escrow deposit process.
Okay, I'll, I'll read that again, because, um, I think I was misinterpreting. Uh, that's what I was expecting to see, but as I read it, I got the impression that it read different to me. So I'll try to be more, um, concrete in my question for the next hearing. So I appreciate your time. Any other questions?
I, I do. If, if denied, is there a, an appeal process available to the applicant?
Not as this ordinance is written, no. They, they would be able to reapply, uh, essentially create a, create a new application and apply again. But there's not an appeal process for it.
I would think there should be some sort of appeal process, shouldn't there?
So it's a good question. This, this is a very straightforward ordinance. The, the, the standards are, are there. It's a, it's a case of, uh, follow the standards and get approved. The language of the ordinance says that explicitly. And, uh, so it, 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 it's a case where, uh, frankly, I would, I would say denial, denial is very rare right now for site plans, for example, and zoning for new development. Typically, it's either conditional approval, fix this, fix that. And, uh, or, or it's, uh, uh, the planning commission may postpone action and say, and put a list and say, these things need to be fixed, and then come back and we'll look at it again. And that would be the common approach here as well. Because the standards are all very clear. Uh, they, if a plan doesn't meet them, uh, then typically the, the response would be, go back and fix these things and then, and then bring us the updated plan. Uh, there, there could be an appeal process. Uh, we do not have a private road court of appeals. I would not want to use the zoning court of appeals to, to sound as though you have.
Right. Okay, that, that makes sense. And typically, I mean, in, in working on the planning commission, you and Peter have had many conversations with applicants. So everybody, for the most part, knows where they stand or where they should be standing, so I guess why would that be any different? Thank you.
And, you're welcome. Yeah, I, I, I think the key thing here is that, that there's really virtually, there are very, very little to interpret. The rules are simply this many feet wide, this type of drill, this base. And, uh, so there's not, not really an interpretation on it. The zoning ordinance, no matter how clearly you write it, there are always going to be elements subject to some interpretation.
All good?
Mm-hmm.
So just for bookkeeping purposes, let the minutes show that we had our first reading. So moving on, on our agenda, uh, eleven B, uh, this is a tabled matter from the previous meeting. Policy Governance Two Point Two, Treatment of Staff. It's on page forty-one in your packet. And, uh, Mr. Stuldryer, this is in your wheelhouse, so please introduce.
Thank you, and I just, uh, if we go back to the other item for just a second, I believe the board should take action with a vote to acknowledge that there's, uh, that this has been introduced and that we've conducted a first reading. So that's on the record.
Fair enough.
I'll make the motion that we conducted a first reading of the proposed new private road ordinance.
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Brown. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? First reading passes unanimously. All right, back to you.
Thank you. And this is an item, there's a report on page forty-one of your agenda packet. This was on your agenda. At your last meeting, I was not here, and as I understand it, the board wanted to table this item because it's administrative, administration-centric. And on that note, I do want to thank, uh, Kim Smith for, uh, running, uh, sitting in this seat at, at the last meeting. I watched that meeting, I think she did a good job. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. This is, uh, the annual review of policy two point two. It's titled Treatment of Staff. This is to be reviewed in February of each year. The wording of the policy, and I'll read, is not terribly long. With respect to the treatment of paid and volunteer staff, township management may not cause or allow conditions which are unfair, undignified, disorganized, and unclear, or violate collective bargaining agreements. There are some additional limitations. And I'll just go on, there, there's just four of them. Management shall not operate without written personnel rules which provide, uh, clarity for staff, provide for an effective handling of grievances, protect against wrongful conditions such as nepotism and grossly preferential, uh, treatment for personal reasons, discriminate against any staff member for non-disruptive expression of dissent, prevent staff from grieving to the board when internal grievance procedures have been exhausted and the employee alleges that the board po, that a board policy has been violated to his or her detriment. The management team shall not operate without any appropriate level, without an appropriate level of cross-training so that the employees can provide basic information and services to consumers and fail to acquaint staff with township managers' interpretation of their protections under this policy. I interpret this policy to indicate that, that, uh, management should have clear written personnel pro, policies that are available to staff which provide for the affecting, effective handling of grievances, that, that, uh, policy should, uh, prevent wrongful, um, protects workers against wrongful working conditions, protects the organization, the community, from the, uh, negative side of such things as nepotism and preferential treatment for personnel reasons. That we want to encourage a diverse, uh, opinion on issues internally, just as the board does and encourages diverse opinions. We want to do that as well at the administrative level and that there needs to be an appropriate level of cross-training among staff where we can do it to deal with, uh, different situations that may come up with staffing levels and we can shift people around within reason and as, as allowed for under collective bargaining agreements. So this, I justify that, uh, interpretation as reasonable. Uh, the use of written personnel and administrative policies clearly is, is a benefit to all concerned. That, uh, as a party to the collective, uh, bargaining agreements, we should hold ourselves accountable for adhering to those. And that staff training is going to benefit, uh, both our fellow employees, treatment of staff, and, and the public as well. There's some data that is provided in the report. I won't go over all of it, but, uh, there are collective bargaining agreements in place. They're adhered to. There's been one grievance filed within the organization since two thousand eighteen. And that was resolved in part via the grievance process and, and part, part of the collective bargaining process, because we sort of tabled part of that issue to the next, uh, time we were negotiating. There have been no grievances filed, uh, since two thousand eighteen. Couple of years ago, under the CARES Act, which expired in two thousand twenty, we arranged so that employees could, um, we created a special bank, sick leave bank, COVID, COVID sick leave bank. And, uh, we put that in place. Uh, we didn't feel it was fair to the staff to have to use a cape or sick leave for this COVID business that at the time was, there was a lot of unknowns about it. That provision did expire in two thousand twenty-one. The collective bargaining agreement that was, uh, effective, one one twenty-three, does allow for an additional five sick days to be used exclusively in the event that an employee tests positive for COVID. Uh, the, those, that bank does not carry, carry over, has no cash value, and it will expire, um, well, that expired on one one twenty-four. So we weren't quite out of COVID yet, we didn't think. We allowed for additional bank treatment of staff. And that has since expired. So we tried to work with staff, we put things in place. And when they don't, when we feel they're no longer useful or needed, we have, uh, dates certain where, where they go away. We do quite a bit of cross-training with, in this organization, both at the BSNA software level, which is our, all our back office software. And then we also, uh, provide training opportunities for, throughout the year, for all the members of our committees and boards, whether it be planning commission, DBA, EDA. Sometimes those training opportunities are provided in-house during regular meetings. Other times, they are provided for outside of, uh, our staff. There is, uh, we have in the collective bargaining agreement, a provision where there's premium pay, which is encouraging our employees in the water and sewer department to obtain licenses that are above the minimum required for their particular position. That's gone a long way of allowing us to deploy a variety of staff and a variety of different, um, situations. We recently increased those opportunities of premium pay with, uh, pesticide application certifications, playground safety inspection certifications, and building inspector licensing for those that aren't the building, for those folks that are not a building official. We hold a lot of, when, when I first came here, there was, uh, I didn't feel that there was enough meetings going on, across the organization. You can have too few, you can have too many. So, uh, there's many more meetings that occur that our staff, uh, staff meetings, department directors meet with staff on a routine, regular basis. And then I meet with my department directors, both as a group and one-on-one throughout the year, and th- those are, uh, pre-scheduled. The one-on-ones are every two weeks. Staff meetings are before each board, re, board of trustee meeting, so we can make sure we're on, uh, the same page with the agenda. And then we meet after each board meeting. We'll have a meeting tomorrow morning. It's on everybody's calendar to debrief following these, these meetings. There are a couple areas that I recognize that we can improve in and, and that we're actually kind of short on. We do not have a personal and personnel and administrative policy document, uh, that is current. It, it needs updating, it's quite old. I feel that there should, could be some additional cross-training among township hall staff that, uh, primarily to get some of the folks trained that are more in the back of the building to be able to come up front when that need arises, cash receding, those kind of things. We do some of that. We have, uh, just in the last couple of years, the folks at the front end, Amy and Tara, have received their certification as Michigan Certified Assessing Technicians, which has been very helpful in allowing the front-end staff, front-office staff to deal with property assessment, property tax questions that are not complicated to be handled at that point of contact versus having to refer everything back to the assessor. So on balance, we feel that, uh, we're in compliance with this policy. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Seeing none, it's back in our hands. Uh, just as a note, you said at the beginning of your introduction that this is to be reviewed in February, and we tabled that. This is the fault of the board, but it was presented last month. We just preferred you to be here to present. So any objections that, that it was submitted when it was due?
No objections.
Um, everybody read the manager's interpretation, you heard the manager speak to that? Agreed?
Yep.
Yes.
And, and the important question is regarding that interpretation, was there proof to explain that we're following, that, that the organization is following the policy from the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Is the interpretation justified and reasonable?
Yes.
Does it address all aspects of the policy?
Yes.
Yep.
My only comment that I had on that, and it was before I quite finished my review of this, was addressed by the manager at the end here saying that, uh, it's noted that the personal, personnel and administrative policy document needs updating, because I had been reviewing the beginning of that policy, and it talks about operating with, shall not operate without written personnel rules. And so I kept looking for that in the just, in the, in the data provided, but it was at the very end that you addressed that that's on your calendar for this year to update.
Yes.
So, the one concern I had as I was doing this was cleared up at the end. So do you feel that, uh, the data presented shows that we're in compliance?
Yes.
Yes.
Any areas of the policy that you'd like to discuss, correct, clarify?
No.
I often try to find something, but I didn't this time. Okay, I think we're good, right?
Yeah.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the board, we have, uh, another item on our new business. Clerks, just so you know, we added items eleven C, which is a two percent discussion. Are we okay pausing our new business? To allow for our guest presenter?
Yes.
To take the floor? Just a historical note, um, Dr. Mary Center, uh, I'm trying to remember, two thousand nine was the first time? Uh, actually helped with community survey for the township then, that was the first time. And then I think it was somewhere around fifteen or so. Sixteen? Okay, I'm going from memory here. Um, and it was very appreciative for me at that time, um, especially beginning to see data six years apart, seven years apart. You can actually hopefully see some trends in, and see where people stay to what's important to them, right? So this is our third set of data that we've requested from the community. I'm always thrilled by the responses that we get. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to add anything to this?
No, thank you. I think they're getting set up. There's a, a PowerPoint deck that, uh, the doctor's going to be, uh, following and Tara's helping with that.
I will simply mention, in your, uh, agenda packet was, is what I would call an executive summary. And there's a link from the agenda packet to our website where the full report is available.
Dr. Center, I'm thrilled you're here, so welcome.
My finger's moving slightly. Okay, all right. So, you know, I am here talking about your residents' views of community issues. And you have a written report. So what I'm going to try to do is just touch on, on the highlights. There are certainly some points that struck me as particularly interesting or particularly useful, and I hope you find them interesting and useful as well. Now, the, the thing to remember is there were actually two ways of distributing this survey. The questions, the questions were the same, but there was a survey that occurred on pieces of paper. of paper. I have some extra copies. I have actually a couple hundred extra copies, as it turns out. But it was a six-page booklet that was sent through US Mail to about 2,000 property owners. And as you see from the dates here, the first mailing was sent out at the very end of October, and then we sent out a couple of reminders, and, you know, each reminder is a bit of a nudge, and the response rate goes up. And we closed the field phase just at the very beginning of January. So the print survey was available to people for about two months, even though somebody I know was cleaning off their desk last week, because here it was March, and I got one more survey. But we ended up with a fairly good response rate for this kind of thing, about 33% of the people who were nailed the survey returned them. Now, that is very typical of, of the response rate from seven years ago. It's what you expect when you do a decent job for a project like this. But I always have to remind you that it does mean that more people chose not to answer than we did. But there, there you go. That's truth, truth, truth in advertising. But the other thing, and I really want to, want to commend the, the board and the staff for, for going this, this route. There are, of course, many people who reside in the township who do not own their own property, but they are citizens. There, there are people who contribute to the community, probably in all kinds of different ways. But we didn't have a list of who those people were. So what we did instead is we printed up just a flyer, and there was a QR code on, on the flyer, as well as this much longer blah, 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 internet address. And people either taking a picture of the QR code or typing out this fairly long address could go to an online survey, which asked all of the same questions on, on the print survey. And there is this system through, through US Mail called the Every Door Delivery Method. I, I really wasn't that familiar with it, but it's the same way that you get your weekly or monthly pizza ads. Oh, that's how they, how they do it. And so those were distributed to about 5,700 doors. In other words, a lot of, a lot of people. Now, as expected, a relatively small number of people, as you see, 89 people responded. As a response rate, that's pretty much what you expect. It's also pretty terrible, but that's also what's expected. So the thing I want to alert you to, it's the fact that I never combined these two sets of, of respondents. And this online survey, again, very important, I'm glad you did it, but we can't think of it as a scientific survey. So certainly, I summarized the responses in the report. I'm going to talk some to you tonight, but the more scientifically valid survey is the print survey. But even then, you, you have to remember, as I, as I start going through this, that this is a sample, and there's always error, because it's a sample, there's always sampling error, the so-called margin of error around every percentage, even in the scientific sample. So you figure any, any percent that you see, the, the real percent, the population percent, is probably somewhere plus or minus 4% of that. Now, the reason I'm stressing that, and this is especially the case if there's some proposal that you personally feel strongly about, oh, look at 32% of people support my thing. It's only 29% support your thing. But 32% and the 29%, they're basically the, the same thing. So, you know, don't wax eloquent about small differences. And I'll try to not, not do that either. So I want to, I want to begin, and I don't think this is going to surprise anyone, but I want to begin just talking about some of, some of the demographics. It, it is the case that large numbers, you see here, over half of, of the sample had lived in the county, Isabella County, for 31 years or more. And the 30.8%, a relatively high percentage of people had lived in the township for quite a long period of time. But notice as well that 20% of the respondents in the print sample, 20%, one in five, had lived in the township for five years or less. So there is some, some variety there, some, some diversity. This isn't going to surprise you. This is the print sample, the one that went to property owners. Most of them, 58%, said that they lived in a subdivision or neighborhood. That's what you'd expect. About a third, 32.5% described the area where they live as rural or agricultural. And that, that's the, the survey of property owners. I was somewhat surprised, but at least in some conversations I've, I've had with staff, maybe it isn't so surprising, given that there hasn't been that much turnover of housing since the pandemic, mortgage rates have, have been, been high. The, the, this print sample, there are a lot of, of senior citizens, and it well may be that there are a lot of senior citizens among property owners. So not only is there not that much turnover and mortgage rates have been high, but younger people, lower-income people are not necessarily in the position to, to own, own property. The, the median income is in the category $75,000 to $100,000. So it's, you know, it's a fairly, a fairly well-off group of people. There are people certainly who are 75 years and older, about, about one in four, but there are also, these are, are there young people in the household? About one in four households said that there were children in, in the household as well. So that gives you some, some sense of, you know, who these, who these people are. And you're going to see when we talk about the online sample, it's quite different. You know, younger people, less money. So I, I know one thing that you're obviously interested in is what people think about with respect to a variety of township services. And I'm going to present this in, in two ways. There was a don't-know option, and I'm going to show you the ratings, but with the don't-know, and then I'm going to take the don't-knows away, because I think there's some, some useful things to keep in mind. So this is customer service from township hall staff, curbside recycling, blah, blah, blah. So if you remember, there was a grading system, A, B, C, D, E, kind of the, the great grading system that, that the schools use. So I give you the, the excellent, that was only, they're one in five, you know, people would have said many things. And, and you see that the percentage of excellent ratings for customer service from the township hall staff, curbside recycling, police services, fire services, you know, at least a quarter of people are not just saying it's okay, but they're giving the highest grade, grade two. On the other hand, I think what's useful here is to look at the don't-know column, because, because remember, these are people, many of whom have been in the township for a fairly extended period of time, not everybody, but many people. And these are property owners, and they're people who took the time to answer the survey, so they're, they're somewhat caring or engaged in community issues. So I was somewhat surprised by the percentage of people who said don't-know for some of these items. And I, I want to highlight those for you, but it's really up to you. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, or all, all of the above. For instance, 52.9% of people say they really don't have an opinion or they don't use fire services. Well, you know, maybe that's a good thing. Like, you know about the fire market, because you have a fire. 58% say they don't know or they haven't used customer services from parks and recreation. Now, that you might wonder, you know, have, have people not used the parks? But again, it may be a good thing. I've used the parks, I have no complaints, everything's fine. I really don't know about, about the staff. 56, 57% don't know or they haven't used the zoning and building permit process. And again, well, you know, reasonable, why, why would they? And the why, in the second to bottom row, 65% of people say they don't know or, or they can't talk about the responsiveness of Board of Trustees members to your concerns. Now again, you might say, that's terrific, because as soon as somebody has a problem, they bind by phone number. As soon as somebody has a problem, they know how, how to get here. So I'm not necessarily saying this is, is a bad thing or anything to be concerned about. But the, I did, I did look, Brian, the, the percents don't know are, for whatever reason, they seem to be trending a little higher than, than seven years ago. So it, it kind of struck me, but I, I'm not convinced it's a bad thing. What I think is, is more, more important to look at is let's get rid of those don't-know responses and look at the people who had an opinion, they gave a grade of A, B, C, D, or E. And, and here, the, what, what I, I want to point out to you is those very low grades, the D and E grades, very small percentages of people for most of the items, not all of them, but, but for fire services, for customer service from the township staff, for police services, customer service from parks and recreation, curbside recycling. You know, add up the D and E percents, you know, it's less than 10%, it's 10%, it's 15%. You know, it's, it's very small percentages of people who have an opinion, but who have, if you will, a negative, a negative opinion. I do want to, I do want to point out the, the, the four areas where more than 20%, you know, that's not 50%, it's not 70, but I want to point out the four areas where people did have an opinion, but at least 20% used those bottom two, the D or E grades. And that is Union Township Water and Sewer Services, and you'll see that repeated again in some of the open-ended comments, the rental inspection process, the zoning and building permit process. And then where people really, really were split, you know, many people had no opinion about the board. Two-thirds of people said they hadn't met with or had encounters with the board. But of the people who did have an opinion, people were really split, pretty much half and half, between people who gave the board A and B grades in terms of responsiveness, and people who gave the more negative D and E grades. So most people had no opinion, one way or the other. But of the people who did have an opinion, there, there was something of a split opinion, which, you know, may be something that, that is important. Okay, now, there was a whole series of questions about priorities for the use of tax dollars. This probably won't surprise anyone. It was the same as seven years ago. People want to fix the damn roads. What's the high priority? Is improving roads in the township. And, you know, I know one of the concerns are, some of the roads are not really part of your, you have no authority over them, but, you know, that's, that's what people are, are saying. You see, some people, at least 30%, give a high priority to reducing blight, enhancing public safety, improving street lighting. But, but the other part of this is to look at the, the far right column, the low priority. 70% of people say, give a low priority rating to electric vehicle charging stations. And 46, 47% low priority, recycling for apartments. And then you see about a third of people give low priority to ordinance enforcement, snow plowing, more sidewalks and pathways. So I think what this means is people actually read the questions. You know, if people aren't reading, they just take some answers, go down the page. But people have, have different views about how tax money should be spent, with biggest support for fixing the roads. There were also these questions about development and, and land use. And again, opinions vary, but just like seven years ago, people gave the, people who are property owners gave the strongest support to protecting the residential quality of existing neighborhoods. 65% definitely support, another 30% probably support. There also was a lot of support, this is the second row, 53, 54% definite support for protecting existing farmland, another 33% probably support exist, you know, maintaining existing farmland. Again, now, you're, you're going to see differences, but with, with the property owner, the print sample, more than half, more than half opposed developing more multifamily housing, and just about half opposed using farmland for large-scale energy production. So the two bottom rows there are where there's the most opposition from, from the, the property, property owners. Now, this is, again, this is almost identical, I mean, it's almost freaky how identical it is to seven years ago. But people were asked about how knowledgeable there, there were about accessing services in the township. And, and it may be of interest to you that one out of five people said they really didn't know how to access services. On the other hand, an even higher percent, but I don't know that it would surprise you, say they have little to know, knowledge about, about the township master plan. Now, whether, whether that matters is up to you, but this was just the same as, as seven, seven years ago. There was a question about how, how would you like to receive information? The question actually was, how would you like to receive information about parks and recreation services, but perhaps you could generalize more generally? And you see here, the top four rows, there, there was a good deal of support for a print newsletter or for an email newsletter from the township. 43% would like to get information from the township website, and about a third, 34% said they'd like to get information, at least about parks and recreation, through social media. All of the other more traditional, you know, the morning sun, radio, public access television, you know, much smaller percentage, percentages. Okay, do you, do you want me to, I mean, this whole next section focuses more on parks. You want me just to kind of go on and then see what your questions are? Should I just keep on going, or do you want me to stop at this point? It's a good stopping point, if you want me to stop.
Oh, you have, I have two quick ones.
Yeah.
Well, it's one, actually, I think. You don't need to go back.
Yeah.
But as far as the, the high priority, medium priority, low, uh, low priority, we're looking at, there was two of those slides, if I remember right, but in previous years, I think both previous surveys and this one, roads were number one.
Yeah, yeah, that is.
And blight, again, is, was our number two, which, that's consistent from the previous years. But there was one on there that, that code enforcement was, what I remember at least, was high last time.
Yes.
But that is drops significantly. It, it was middle of the road this time. Is that, is that, your memory as well?
But that may be because the townships are doing, doing a better job with code enforcement. I mean, that may be.
Well, there has been a focus on that, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, that, I think, because that came out more, in a more pronounced way, as you said before. So that may actually be a point of change where, where the township has invested more from that, or devoted more staff time to that, so it's less of a priority today.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else? All right.
Okay. So this next section, and I, I know the Planning Commission was very concerned about this. So the next section deals with parks and recreation. And this was much more extensive set of questions on this 2024 survey than either seven years ago or 14 years ago. So were there, are there sufficient parks and green space areas near your residence? 72% say yes, they felt as if there were sufficient parks and green space areas. How often do you visit the existing township parks? And here, a, a third of people, that 33.9% say they never visit the township parks. On the other hand, 14%, but, you know, that's not many, one in seven, visit the township parks at least a few times a month, a few times a month or more frequently. So again, this is the kind of thing, you know, where you have to say, well, you know, that's okay. Or you think, well, gee, you know, maybe we should do things to encourage these, these things. Now, people were asked why, why they haven't visited the parks more. And you see here that the top reason is we're too busy or we're not interested. So what's important about that is, you know, you could put up all kinds of new this and new that, new this and new that, you know, whether, whether that would arouse interest, you know, I'm not sure. It probably wouldn't. It probably wouldn't get rid of people being too busy. The second reason for not visiting the parks was disability or age. And, and we know that there are a large number of seniors who responded to the survey. So, you know, again, there may be certain things that would be helpful, but maybe it would be hard. In terms of the most frequently visited park, it was McDonald, McDonald Park here, rather than Jamison Park, I don't think that would surprise you, but there you go. But then there was a question about what parks, not township parks, what other parks outside of the township do you visit most? And some combination of Island Park and Deerfield Park were, were the parks that people visited most. And, you know, again, that's probably, probably understandable enough. But what, what I, I think is more interesting is the question, well, why do you visit those other parks? What makes them appealing to you? And here, you're gonna see this point repeated again and again. And I think it's something that perhaps is actionable, I mean, it's up to you, but it's possibly actionable. The reason people said they visited these other parks most had, had to do with the trails. Um, I like to hike and bike, a variety of interesting trails and well-kept, walking and running. I mean, there were things about the trails, whether it was walking, whether it was biking, whether it was skiing, but somehow the trails were, were appealing. And then the, the special features was a whole grab bag of different things. Well, what is it about those parks that you like? The boating and the fishing, disco, soccer, outside recreation play, pickleball, the sledding hill, river access, I mean, we coded that all as there's something special there. But there was no one thing, the one thing that stood out was something involving, involving a trail. Now, there were questions in terms of the existing parks about whether people were satisfied with the, the condition of the parks. And here, people were asked to respond with a one to five scale. And four and five, you know, that's the top, that's what you're looking for. And overall condition of the parks, as you see, over 80% give a rating of four and five to the overall condition. How about your satisfaction with, with McDonald Park, the facilities? It's, it's a tad less than 80%, but, you know, a high percent giving responses of four and five. How about satisfaction with Jamison Park? It's a little bit less, but again, it's, it's, you know, two-thirds of folks giving, again, those highest ratings of four and five. So to the, the parks that exist, you know, people have positive things to say about them. Then there were questions about what about new parks? And you, you see here in the fourth row, 42, 43% of people say, well, no new park land is needed. But among the people who want something new, you see the 29.9, about 30% of people would like additional land on the Chippewa, on the Chippewa River. But the, the Mo, the largest number of people say no new park land is, is needed. Then there were a series of questions, if, if there are going to be changes, new, new amenities or new, uh, new improvements, what would you like to see? And, and again, the top row, 42%, instead of new things, focus on maintaining existing park facilities. But of the people who wanted something new, an improvement of an existing park, again, expand the network of paved pathways. Or the, the third row, add a lighted outdoor running, walking route here at McDonald Park. For the fourth, 21.6%, it's, it's the fourth highest, a trailhead parking for a pathway to shepherd. So I didn't just pull out the ones that had to do with trails, these were the top four. So there is a message here about pathways, pathways and, and trails. Okay, now, when it, when it comes to new facilities, new amenities, new services, things that don't currently exist, and there was something like 22 items listed here. But most of the 22 items, it was 2%, 5%, 10%, you know, not lots of people. But, but the, the two top ones, 44%, something new, paved, walking and bikeway paths. The second highest, unpaved hiking cross-country ski trails. The third, nature, nature preserve. So out of all of these possibilities, you know, people have the first points of view. But if you had to say, is there anything that, that kind of stands out? It's something to do with hiking, biking, skiing, walking, trail, trail kinds of, kinds of things. Okay, just, just a few more here. There was a, a question on, on the quality of, of life. And, you know, these are fairly well-off people economically, they're property owners. Something like 85%, that's a high percent. 85% of people rate the quality of life, uh, living in Union Township as excellent or good. That might be useful for some of your, your marketing, uh, marketing materials. On the other hand, when people were asked, think about the growth that has taken place in Union Township over the past 10 years. Of course, you know, some 20% of people say don't know, not everyone's been in the township for 10 years. But among the people who had an opinion about change over the last 10 years, there's more of a split between the people who say excellent and good and the people who say fair and poor. And this is one of those, those areas where you just see right in your face the limitation of doing this kind of survey analysis. Because the reasonable question you should ask me is, well, why are the people who said fair and poor, what don't they like? And of course, we don't know, you'd have to do more of a open-ended qualitative. Ma'am, you said that the quality of life, the change has been poor. You know, what's happened, what don't you like? Because it may be very personal things. As we saw, there are a number of, of quite, quite senior people. Maybe the quality of life is less positive for people because they've developed health problems. Or the walking that they used to enjoy doing, they have more difficulty doing now. So what I'm saying is, it may be useful to realize that there's some unhappiness about change. But I, I don't have a clue, I mean, the data just aren't there for me to have any kind of, I can ask, I can tell you what questions would be useful to ask, but I really can't, you know, can't explain it, explain it much, much to you. The other thing that I want to mention, and I thought I'd included it, it's certainly in the report, but I, I see where I'm going, it's not here. There was one question that focused on the pandemic relief funds, you know, the $1.4 million. And people were asked, what would you like that money spent on? And the largest number of people wanted it spent on infrastructure. Now, I don't know if that's possible, but that's what the largest percentage of, of people said. And then people were split between recreation and, and general services. But I want to, I want to bring, bring that, that up because the last two questions in the survey were open-ended questions. And of course, many people at this point, we're on page six, many people don't answer. You know, they're tired, they don't want to be bothered. But of the people who did answer, we, we spend a lot of time reading each response and, and putting it, putting it into, into code, code categories. And the, the question I want to focus on is what might be most interesting to you, which is, what do you think, your own words, what do you think is the most important issue for Union Township to address going forward, to address in the future? And infrastructure, various aspects of, of infrastructure, a lot of people have comments along these lines. Now, here, I do want to point out to you, these are not percents, these are numbers. Because again, not everyone responded. And so it didn't make sense to talk about what percents of 638. So these are numbers. And then the other thing is, even though the question is, what is the most important issue? Some people spent quite a bit of time or space and they talked about more than one issue. So any one person, their comment might have been in more than one category. But, but you see, you know, there, 59 people talk about roads. I'm just gonna read you some comments. Maintain quality roads, fix the side streets. I'd like to see East Valley Road between Isabella and Somerton paved. It was a muddy mess most of the year. You know, those are, those are the kinds of comments under, under, uh, under roads. That was the most common. Sidewalks and bike paths, complete the sidewalk network, pave pathways on high-traffic roads. The most immediate need in my part of the township is to complete the sidewalk near the charter school on Isabella Road before some children are killed by the careless drivers on the road. You know, these are people's verbatim comments. Water and sewer, you, you see, some number of people, 51 people, use this space to save things like, most important issue, clean and safe drinking water. I don't care what your tests say, I'm tired of seeing slick in my water. Better water quality for drinking, the water's hard and destructive. You, you see, see that's coming. Then there were some comments dealing, dealing with the board. Three people had something to say about the board. But I want to stress that because you may remember from seven years ago, a number of people, not half, but a number of people were concerned about ethical issues involving the board and the administration. You know, there had been some, some issues going, going back. And a number of people in 2016 made comments about, you know, be ethical, clean up your act. And those just don't appear, there might have been one person. So that's a very positive change regarding the board and the administration. So what people didn't talk about, what people didn't complain about is, is sometimes as important to note as what people did talk about. So I think that's a very, a very positive thing. And then, of course, some people talked about taxes. And I don't think there was a single person who thought taxes should be higher. I looked and looked, I don't, I don't think there was a single person, I really looked. And, you know, there were some comments about, about use of tax dollars. Township leaders need to have a vision for the future, the status quo is a failure. Fix the poor administration, getting them to work with the Isabella Road Commission. Become more user-friendly. So, you know, there were some comments about, about the administration, but not about, about ethical issues. Then there were a variety of, of issues that, that we coded as, as community issues. But, but what I want to stress here is the safety issues that people pointed out were less issues of, we need more police, we need more of the sheriff's department. And there were more issues, we, we called them safety, safety features, not, not kind of law enforcement, not... I mean, some people talked about crime and some people talked about the police. But the more prominent things were, were things like, like better lighting at intersections, maybe more rubble strips and stop signs, wheatgrass cut on sides of dirt roads, better salt brine on winter roads would be helpful. I mean, that's a safety concern, but it has nothing to do with crime rates. Or build pedestrian walkway on the bridge over the freeway, the Broadway. Enforce speed limits, safety for residents, better lighting on, on the streets. So it is a safety issue, but I, I, I think, you know, you need to be, you know, it's not a police, it's not a police issue. And as a consequence, it may actually be something that's easier to address, you know, than, than hiring another, another officer, you know, fix, fix this, fix, fix that kind of, kind of thing. And then, and this will not surprise anyone, people were very mixed in their views about development. And you see from these numbers, people were equally divided between people who wanted the community to stay the way it is. Keep ag lands and open green space, keep industry out, more residential, no cannabis dispensaries, that's what we need to say. But, but then there was the other side, people wanting more, and I'm sure this is what drives you crazy day to day as staff member. Become more business-friendly and transition from agriculture. Bring in business for job growth. Need to focus on getting back to a developer-friendly and welcoming community. In other words, pretty much just the opposite of, of what, what you heard. And then there were some comments about zoning and, and regulations. Clean up the messy yards, enforcing people to take care of their home or property. But then there's also less zoning and building restrictions. Reasonable zoning to allow for more commercial growth. So again, you know, concerns with zoning and regulation, but, you know, very, very different views. In terms of services, it was just a grab bag, you know, somebody wants more of this, somebody wants more of that, but, you know, there was no, there was no, you know, one new service that, that stood out. And there always are miscellaneous, miscellaneous comments. Now, I do want to mention with these, these 89 people who took time to answer the online sample. And here, what I thought was interesting is actually the second bullet point. Many of people's viewpoints and many of people's experiences between the two samples were, were similar. So there was a lot of overlap. It's not like, you know, two totally different groups of people who want a really different, different community. So there was a lot of overlap. But what I want to do is, is point out some of the differences so that the folks who took the time to answer the online survey are not, not forgotten about. So the, the, the demographics, the people themselves were quite different, but in ways that you'd expect. It was a much younger group of people, they lived in the township for fewer years. They were certainly more likely to live in high-density apartments or condo complexes. That's where these flyers were sent. And they had, they had lower income, their, their income, you know, was in a, in a much lower, lower category. They also, on some of these items, what's your opinion about this or that? They were more likely to say they, they didn't know. And of course, that's reasonable too, if they lived in the, in the community for, for a smaller, a shorter, you know, period of time. Where there were some differences, now remember, it's a, it's a, a younger group of people. In terms of that question, how would you like to receive information about parks and, and recreation facilities? The percentage saying through social media was, was higher. People still were interested in a newsletter and the website, but social media was kind of the top, the top category. And this group of people gave lower ratings to water and sewer services. Now, I, I don't know if it's a different system or not, but their, their ratings, A, B, C, D, E, that there were more ratings at the low end. On the other hand, and this isn't going to surprise you, people are living in a different setting, plus they have less income. People, these folks put a high priority on, on snow plowing of sidewalks and a higher rating on recycling for apartments. They probably are more likely to be living in apartments where recycling is an issue. They also were more likely, or a higher percent, I should say, supported multifamily housing. And a higher percent gave, uh, high, not a high priority, but gave support for using farmland for solar energy development. Now, when I say more likely, I should be a bit clear. I, I never did these statistical tests because the one sample isn't a scientific sample. But just looking at the percents, a higher percent are in favor of using farmland. And not just a teeny high, but, you know, quite a bit higher percent using farmland for solar energy development. The other thing, and this, this may be something you can do something about, you know, fairly easily and inexpensively, these folks were less likely to use the township parks. But the reason is they don't know where they're located. You know, this is a younger sample, so it's less likely to be disability or age as a reason. I mean, it might be, but it's, you think it'd be less likely. But a, a higher percentage said, well, I don't know where they're, I don't know where they're located. Uh, they also were more likely to use Jamison Park rather than McDonald Park. So the percents were pretty much the flip. If, if you remember, it was sixty-seven percent of the property owners saying they're most likely to use McDonald Park. With this online group of folks, it was like sixty-some percent more likely to use, use Jamison Park. They also were more likely to express support for small neighborhood parks. Now, that may be because they didn't know about the existing parks, but they were more likely to, to support, uh, small neighborhood parks and more likely to support a park on the south end of the township. And at least as I know of, the township, that's where a lot of these folks would be near to, you know, where they were living. So that's, that's reasonable enough. So there were some differences. I think the differences are, are kind of the things you'd expect. You know, it's not these kind of, huh, you know, these off-the-wall, uh, kind of, kind of differences. And again, I think it's very useful and a, a good thing that you, you reached out to, to these folks as well. So I appreciate your support and, and certainly there were seven hundred and some people who took the time to fill out these surveys. I always thank them. I did not redo everything for that one questionnaire that came in this week, but we will thank that person. So what issues do you have for me?
For me, just because I've looked at the surveys from the past so many times. There's not a lot surprising.
Yeah.
Um, there are some changes in some areas, and I brought up a couple of those already, but, um... It's, I hate to say it's almost what I expect, but it, but it is reaffirming in, on a lot of things.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's because I have predispositioned to, um...
Well, then you have a good field for the community, you, you know, you talk to a lot of people.
And I think when you were addressing, um, more development, um, more neighborhoods?
Yeah.
Keep ag?
Yeah.
I mean, the consistent message that I've taken from the three surveys now is having that green space agricultural part of our community is important to a large percentage of people. But the development side, um, I think we've tried, at least in the past, in the previous master plan, tried to address that by mitigating the use of, um, leapfrogging.
Yeah.
Discouraging leapfrogging and trying to build from the middle out.
Yeah.
And that has a tendency then to allow development without wrecking that green space and ag land. And so kind of reaffirm that main pillar that the Planning Commission, uh... Would, would you disagree with that pillar? I mean, I think that's how our previous master plan looked. And the only other comment I had was, I think in the, in the previous survey, maybe it was just the first one, um, you actually shared the comments? Do you have a document that has all those comments?
I have all of the comments, yes, all of the comments exist. I think, you know, if, if individual people would like, I'd like to see the responses to this question or the responses to that, those, those could be made available. You have to be very careful with those.
I know, I know.
Because even though I have tried, whatever names were apparent, I, I excised them.
That's good.
But when you know the community well, you sometimes can figure out who's who. And I have made a promise to many people that confidentiality would be maintained. So you have to be quite careful.
Yeah, that's fair. I, I retract my desire to see those. Cause they were kind of useful in the past, but you're right, you could sometimes derive from them, oh, that's John Doe.
Yeah, I see, there are particular things like, you know, like, I'd like to see just the comments, what were the negative comments on the administration or, you know, what did people like about Deerfield Park? I mean, those, I could, you know, find those and make sure there was nothing in those, um, you know, that...
I see.
And I, I tried as best, best I could. I mean, there was one comment where someone was talking about a concern with a particular road and I personally had never heard of the road. And, you know, I looked up on my GPS system, it was quite a small road. I mean, maybe, you know, it didn't go, it wasn't Isabella. Um, so I, I, I removed that because I figured, how many people even know about that road? I, you have to be careful with these.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. Board?
No.
I'm excited to have this.
I think you did a great job and thank you so much.
Excellent information for us.
Yeah, you know, I wanna then mention two, two takeaways that, that I had, which of course, you know, you can even disregard if, if you want. But I just wanna go back to that issue about the, the don't knows. Both in the print sample and especially, you know, the, the, the people who live more in the apartment complex, the condo community, who didn't know where the parks were. And the number of people who said they were interested in a newsletter or, or the website or social media. There may be some areas without it being this huge effort, you know, sixteen-page, multicolored newsletter going out four times a year. I'm sure you don't wanna undertake that, it's expensive, it's time-consuming. But there may be some ways where you can publicize the parks more or make people aware of, of some of these opportunities and services, you know, without it being this huge expenditure of effort on, on anybody's part. So that might be, be something. And then, you know, in terms of, of the parks issue, and I know I'm gonna be with the Planning Commission next week, uh, this issue of walking and biking and trails and connections and, you know, that, that actually is kind of a message coming out of this. Um, you know, unlike sledding hill and pickleball and, you know, I mean, there are people who want all of those things. But the one area, after all these questions, where there seems to be more consistent support, or I'm, I'm calling them trails, I don't mean it has to be a, you know, a, you know, dirt trail going into the wilderness. But, you know, that does seem to be an issue. Now, whether, whether that's possible, whether that's realistic, you know, I don't know. But it, it's easier when there seems to be some agreement rather than, you know, these people want this and these people want that, and these people want this and these people want that. And, you know, you could be spending on parks equipment until you have no money to fix the damn roads, just as a...
As a note on that, um, I think this board has made a priority pathways in general.
Yeah.
Um, and so, uh, for example, Crawford, we partnered with the city, there's gonna be a pathway that goes along, uh, Mission Creek, um, all the way from Pickard to River. So we've continued to try to look for opportunities to do that.
Yeah.
That was one of those things that reaffirmed, um, what we thought was important.
You know, I'm always, you say, well, why did we do this if it just, I already knew all this? I actually, you know, from my perspective, I always liked that because if, if I'm presenting information to a group of people who, by virtue of their, their position or by virtue of, of there being an official who's elected, and people say, huh? This is weird, this is surprising. I more start to worry that something funny would be served. You know, I, I mean, I hope there's some messages here that are useful to you instead of this sense of, I'm acting on the basis of personal preference or anecdote. You might have somewhat more support. But I'm, I'm actually glad when people say there was nothing, you know, earth, earth shaking here. Cause I'd start to worry, did I shake the earth the wrong way?
Let me ask this board, I'm curious, was there anything earth-shattering to any of you?
I thought something kind of interesting. And it just kinda, everything seemed to work out, um, in both the paper and the online.
Yeah.
Was about the pandemic, so page fourteen and fifty, what to spend the money on. And the conversations we had in the beginning, and then what we actually did seemed to coincide with what the community is looking for, which is township infrastructure.
Yeah.
So it was kind of interesting how through discussion we, we grew into... I, I like that.
I, I had the same thoughts, actually. Yeah. Excellent point.
Oh, that I can't be, is it?
No.
It'd be interesting to know if you sometimes took roads out of the answer, you cannot answer roads. What would their, what would their thing be? It would be very interesting.
Well, I guess I'm, um... If there's a surprise, the surprise would be that blight was still number two. Either, either we're not making progress on that, or maybe, maybe my surprise more is, um, the clarity of that as a priority for our community. It just reaffirms that as a priority.
Maybe blight seven years ago was more like building blight, now they're more focused on weeds, which is always gonna occur. So maybe that's just more of a actual blight rather than, you know, specific.
Right. But, but that being a priority to me is, I, I thought that might change, but, um, if it didn't, then I'm like, oh, that's, it's real. It's a real issue.
Yeah.
For apparently a lot of people.
Yeah. Less so, now again, the comparisons are always tricky, but the, the online sample less of an issue. But, but, you know, it's a different, people living in a different situation, different point of view.
Well, thanks for all your hard work on this.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah.
I'll see you Tuesday.
Yes. Now, are you interested in the whole shebang or just the parks information?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm good with whatever you, you...
Okay, so you'll have, you'll have, you can walk in late, oh, excuse me.
No, no. No, because the, the parks, that's part of our master plan and...
Yeah, I knew that, that if you wanted the first, the first section as well, would be useful in overview. The non-parks part.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, very good, very good.
I, yeah, I think so, it's all, it's all kind of relevant, so...
Yeah, okay.
Master plan speaks to a lot of the stuff that, um, the first part of your presentation addresses.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alrighty, thank you again. Shall we move to, uh, back to new business to finish that up? Item eleven C. Just a note, um, so this, we added this to the agenda, thinking we'd have time before Dr. Center got here. Um, but tomorrow morning is the two percent roundtable. Um, are, were you gonna be there?
Yes.
Okay, so at least you and I are planning on being there at this point. And so I think the goal is just to hear from the rest of the board, um, what kind of things we should be promoting. Is that a reasonable description?
Walkways and pathways, walk...
So, so if, if you're not familiar, if you've not been to a roundtable before, um, you have an opportunity to go to various tables. One might be geared towards education, you probably describe this better than I can. Um, one might be geared towards roads, one might be geared towards, uh, public safety. Um, and so there's these various tables throughout the room. Uh, various council members, tribal council members will be at various tables. Uh, so leaders throughout the county come and we, you just, you spend the time at maybe three tables. And so you get an opportunity to talk to not just the leaders throughout the county, but also tribal council members and/or staff, um, about what their visions are. And they wanna hear from us, uh, where our needs are, where we, we see, um, opportunities to partner or... You wanna add to that?
Well, um, no, I thi, it's always been a great opportunity so that the council is not just looking at a piece of paper, they can actually get ideas and get, actually have questions and more of a dialogue. But it's also very interesting to see what the neighbors are doing, to see what the county's asking for and see what other townships. So it's kind of a very learned, it's a real, uh, learning experience, even if it's not your idea, but listen to what everybody else is going on, cause it may stir, stir an idea in you on that. So I think that's also a really good point.
Yeah, it's, it's a fantastic opportunity, I think.
Yeah, it is.
I learn every time.
Yeah.
So anyways, um, I don't know if you have a specific agenda on this?
Well, I did want the board to be aware and you can tell me to not do it if you'd like, but I think based on what we heard today, um, there are two applications that we currently have done. Um, they're, they're partnered applications. One is Meridian Road partnering with Deerfield and the Road Commission.
That's two miles, correct?
It's three miles, Remus to Baseline. It was rated as poor on their Pazer rating by the Road Commission. It's a total construction cost of about six-hundred-and-seventy thousand. And if we get Deerfield, Road Commission, two percent, Union Township, we'd each be in it for a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand bucks.
Wow.
So that's an existing application. I have not submitted it yet, but it's drawn up. The other application, same condition, I have not submitted it yet, but it's drawn up, is Lincoln Road, Broome Field to Deerfield. That is, uh, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand is a little bit more than what we had during budget development in terms of a cost. That application's being submitted with an ask of two percent for a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. The Road Commission, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and Union Township, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars to get to that total. We have budgeted for Meridian Road, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. So if we get to two percent, we're, we'd be, we'd be under budget. If we do not get to two percent, then we may be a little... I might have just said that the wrong way, but if, if we get to two percent, we'll have money available within the budget for this line item. If we don't, we're likely to need to budget more money than currently if we wanna do the project. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Just to note, both projects, uh, manager just brought up was something of the Road Commission that, uh, I know, Trustee Smith went to that, um, that both those are projects they're recommending that we need to do. Right? And the other note on that is, last year at the two percent roundtable, I was sitting at a table with the supervisor from Deerfield Township and he brought this up. He says, I haven't explored this yet with the Road Commission, the, the Meridian Road. Um, and so he asked if we would be willing to partner. So I immediately, after the meeting, I went and talked to Tony Bottet, said, is this on your radar? And he's like, not at all, at that point it wasn't. Um, and then on my way back, I called Kim, you were not available, so I called Kim and I said, just let you know, this may come through the back door, other, another channel, um, cause this supervisor from Deerfield's gonna push to look at this being done. So this is a good example of those tables, something else came out of it.
So we're, the township is gonna be the applicant, not Deerfield, or you haven't figured that out, or... Cause usually just one would apply, then the other one would be like a funding partner? And I just was just, and the second question would be is like, are you gonna have, like, you can put priority? Are these both gonna be high priority, medium, or have you thought about that yet?
They're both gonna be high priority.
Okay.
Almost, we don't have a lot of, compared to the other communities. The other being primarily the county and the city. They fund almost operational items with their two percent.
Yeah.
And so that puts us at a bit of a disadvantage because we don't have those operational needs as much.
Mm-hmm.
So when we submit things, they're almost always high priority.
Okay. No, I think those are great.
And I don't recall if, uh, I'd have to look, who's the primary on the Meridian Road? I know we are on the...
Lincoln.
Lincoln, but I don't recall. But maybe, we, we may have put Walt.
Go ahead.
Cause...
Put Walter.
Walt seems to carry a lot of weight around.
Yes, he does.
This county.
He does. Everybody knows him.
I think he was the inspiration for this project anyways. And, and, I mean, the, the road needs it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
He's just the one that kind of brought it to the forefront.
And we, we did go back and forth a little bit, cause from Meridian to Deerfield Township, I don't know if you recall Meridian Road, but there's only about two inches of pavement on the right side of the white line on Meridian Road. And there was no interest by Deerfield Township of extending that even an inch.
Yeah.
It sounds like, we asked.
So it'll be on the east side of the road?
And that didn't seem to maintain.
No. It was a joke.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on that? So I think if I, given the opportunity, obviously these projects, I'll try to promote. But if there's opportunities and discussions on pathways, that was obviously another thing we heard that's still important to our community. Okay. That brings us to extended public comment, item twelve on the agenda. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And seeing no one remotely, I'll look to the public here in present. By the way, for the record, it was nine oh five PM, we'll open that up.
Yeah, Park Anglers, seventeen ninety-eight, List River Road. Just a little comment, when you guys were talking about the parks and everything, I'm on the parks board for the county. And during the pandemic, we closed the park for a couple of days, we opened it right back up. The attendance really went up high. And the last couple, we look at the numbers all the time, it's one of our best parks now. So I think once people discovered the park, they kind of liked it. So, yeah, they're competing with Coldwater Park as our attendance. It's really, it's, it's, it never went down after the pandemic came back. So just a comment that people in your study didn't know about the parks or didn't know much about it, you know, maybe just a small education. So just curiosity, so thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at nine oh six PM. That brings us to item thirteen on the agenda, manager's comments, Mr. Stuhl dryer.
Thank you, I just had two. You covered the board review training class earlier. Just wanted to say that it had been held and my feedback was very positive. And also hit herb from you and others of some of the comments where we can improve it next year. And then the other item is looking to hold organizational-wide CPR training. And with that comes the training for the defibrillators. And because of the setup, I want to hold that on four sixteen and want to have everybody in the township attend. And I've kind of made that point clear. But that would involve closing the township hall on the sixteenth from eight thirty to one thirty. And I just want to check with the board, in the past when we've had something somewhat similar, there's not been an objection. It should be closed for half a day, there'd be plenty of notice provided. But I think it's important, safety training.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. That brings us to final board member comment, Trustee Brown.
I'm all set, all set tonight.
All set. There, Cody?
I'll be having training for election inspectors, March twenty-second at five PM and March twenty-third at eleven AM here. So, if you know anything, I'm stopping.
Inspectors.
Yes.
Versus the poll workers.
They're the same thing.
Oh, they are?
It's one and the same.
Oh, okay, I always use poll worker, but, thank you. Trustee Therry?
I'm good. I've, one note, the sheriff was at a recent meeting and we had some discussion afterwards about getting a tour of the new facility. And so I was, he'd off, he'd offered it to me and I said, it'd be nice if the entire board and/or any staff in Union Township would like to attend. So there was some interest expressed in that. And then with the election, et cetera, kind of held off a little bit, thought I'd wait. So I'm going to rekindle that in early April, trying to schedule a time for an opportunity for people to see that. Is that reasonable?
Yeah.
And at this point, if I, if I have communicated this clear already, Thursday's seemed to be the best time for the sheriff and typically around lunchtime because most of the construction staff is on break. But I'll, I'll, I'll try to keep everybody in the loop.
You know what the ticket prices are?
Commit a crime.
You get it free. Free ride.
Free ride.
And one final comment, I will be away on vacation during our next meeting. Just giving you a heads up. And I would change the date, I would try not to miss a meeting, but the school system's spring break I have no control over. And since my wife works for the school system, that's when I get over. Happy to entertain any motions for.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion by Smith, support by Brown.
Aye.
Aye.
We're considering adjourned.